Tim gets to sit all the way up there.
I guess it's his building.
You got seven o'clock?
Yep, I do too.
At seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order, invite everyone to please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Jim Donback?
Here.
Steve Nelson?
Here.
James Shiloh?
Here.
Juliene Davy?
Here.
Jeff Jacobson?
Here.
Eric Jones?
Present.
Kristen Rin?
Here.
McCormick's present.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed?
So move Jacobson.
Second, Jones.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So move Nelson.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Rin?
Yes.
Donback?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Audience to visitors, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to address the board?
Good evening.
Probably know the rules already, but if you could just keep your comments to three minutes or less, we'd appreciate that.
Thank you. Jennifer McCormick, Sycamore Education Association President. Couple weeks ago, I came to you with some data, and as a data-driven district, I think it's important to update you on that data. We surveyed our membership, beginning yesterday at 12:30, and closed our survey today at 3:00 PM. We had 246 of our members able to respond in that short period of time. So, some news concerning our feelings about safety to return. The bar moved a little bit in the wrong direction, probably for our comfort levels. We had 69.1% of us not feeling it is safe to return. You remember it was 63 a couple weeks ago. We had 30.9% of our faculty prepared to return. We asked a couple of different questions this time to give you a little more information. I will be forwarding this to you if you wish. We asked our membership how well they understand the safety protocol. We had 14.6, oh, I'm sorry, and that was on a level, a one-to-five rugged scale. And 14, one being low. 14.6 of our membership said that they were a level one. 35.6, level two. 27.6 at a level three in their understanding. 15.9 at a level four. And 5.3 at a level five. This is alarming, considering we've had presentations. We've also had elementary principals presenting and doing a fantastic job trying to share information. But this still feels like we're not getting enough answers for what would happen during the school day. Our next question, because we wanted to hit teaching and learning. How well do you understand what your day as a teacher will look like? We use the same scale. 27.2% had a level one understanding. 42.3% a level two. 18.3% a level three. 10.2% were at a level four. And 2% at a level five. Our next question concerned the remote days. How well do you understand what you are preparing for in remote days? 41.9% of our faculty, or staff, is at a one percent, or a level one, I'm sorry. 30.9% of our staff, our membership, is at a level two. 18.3 are at a level three. 7.3% are at a level four. And 1.6 are at a level five. Our final question, we kept from our last survey. Asking people's desire to return, or if they were considering not returning due to maybe FMLA or family needs. That number did go down to 25.2% are still considering that. I would like to thank you for thinking of the data. I have a lot of my colleagues here to put forth more questions that they're still waiting for answers on, even after all the work that has been done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is John Walter, and I'm a fourth grade teacher at Southeast Elementary, and I've taught there for the past 14 years. We understand that this is a difficult position to be put in, and we would like to thank the entire board and the administration for the countless hours that you have worked. However, I'd like to ask you, why are we continuing to push forward a hybrid plan? When we have so many questions regarding safety, job expectations, classroom assignments, and communication with administration that still have not been answered with less than two weeks before the start of the school year? These questions should have been clearly communicated to the staff and to the community weeks prior. I know that we keep getting new information from the state. But if they keep changing the guidelines on us, then what will prevent them from continuing to do so after the start of the school year?
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Angela Cambier. I teach at Sycamore Middle School. I've been with the district for over 20 years. Across the district, teachers have been searching for answers to some basic questions as they prepare to come back to work. What exactly will my workday look like in the hybrid model? What will be required of me after my in-person students leave for the day? It was previously stated here that teachers will be asked to clean. Will they be cleaning and supervising hallways at the same time? Middle school teachers will be transitioning between classes with two-minute passing period. Therefore, teachers who will apparently also be cleaning, either before they leave or when they arrive in their next classroom, will also be gathering supplies and unhooking technology. Then, they'll move to the next classroom where they'll unpack, hook up technology, and prepare to teach. After all that, how much time is really going to be left to actually teach? As a parent of children in the district, I believe that my son's teachers deserve answers to these questions so they can further prepare for the year. And as a teacher, I also believe that the faculty and staff deserve answers too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pam Nelson. I have been teaching for 26 years, and the last 16 have been at Sycamore Middle School. I've stood before the Board of Education, staff, students, and families of District 427, and celebrated our wonderful students and their many accomplishments on numerous occasions. However, tonight, I stand before you for different reasons, and it is difficult to do so. I am here along with my colleagues to advocate for our students and staff and for a safe return to learning. At the current time, I don't believe that all of the answers are in place. That is not to discredit all of the countless hours put in by our maintenance staff, our administrators, board members, and teachers over the past months. We must advocate on behalf of the students and families we serve, as well as the staff that work with these students, our bus drivers, our custodians, office staff, school nurses, paraprofessionals, support services, administrators, and teachers. Our district mission is to empower all learners to succeed in their world. Right now, their world, our world, is turned upside down, and we don't have all the answers. We all share in the sadness and loss of the familiar, rites of passage, and the thrill of what's next for these children and young adults in their world. For many, there was no closure on the last school year, and it's been challenging to navigate a new normal. Teachers have not had closure, yet they still plan and worry about what comes next. Again, many have put in endless hours this summer to prepare for all the what-ifs. We must not lose sight of what is at stake here. Human beings, a student's life, a staff member's life. Behind every student, there are parents, siblings, grandparents, friends. Behind every staff member, there are families, parents, spouses, children, neighbors, colleagues. We must be certain that the safety of our students and staff is the number-one priority. With the increasing shortfall of substitutes, do we have adequate subs available in the event of an absence of any staff member? We must also provide the opportunity for our staff to be empowered to do the best job in these unpredictable times. Staff needs to be prepared. There needs to be structure and routines established. There needs to be safety expectations communicated and consistently reinforced. This cannot be a figure-it-out-as-we-go-along. The stakes are too high. There needs to be time to collaborate with staff and administration, working to figure out what path we take together. All of these need to be in place before we can ensure a safe environment for our students and staff to return in the fall, be it in-person, hybrid, or fully remote. We are here because we are teachers, as well as new learners, at the very same time. For all of us, learning is not an option. Quality teaching and high expectations for our student learning is a priority. We need to be supported and allowed this opportunity to practice a new way of teaching and learning. Our teaching will look different, and we will make mistakes along the way. It's not about perfection, but rather learning to adapt in our ever-changing world.
Thank you. Your time has stopped, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sue Shaver. I live in Sycamore, and I'm a math teacher at Sycamore High School. I have two kids that went through the Sycamore schools. If they were school-aged children, I would choose remote learning for them. As a teacher, I am told I will be expected to wipe down desks, stand in the hallway to manage social distancing, make sure students are wearing their masks, and not congregating in hallways and in classrooms. As a teacher, I'm expected to teach hybrid A, hybrid B, and remote learning for every class, every day that I teach. This is going to double, if not triple, my workload, and this is not including emails and follow-ups. Teachers have technically helped create a hybrid plan, but that was not the plan that was presented to the board. At the high school, we were told we are down two custodians. Last year with full custodians, the second floor did not get cleaned consistently. I know, because I'm on the second floor and complained many times. How can the rooms be cleaned thoroughly this year, being down two custodians? High school teachers have also been told that we might be sharing classrooms and will need to relocate to teacher lounges with other teachers. This brings up a problem of social distancing, wiping down after each teacher uses a lounge, and moving around the school all day. Some teachers do not even know what they're teaching, or even what grade level they're teaching for next year. How can we prepare when we have not been given our assignments yet? William Haynidge, he is an epidemiologist at Harvard, he is quoted as saying, "The hybrid model is probably among the worst that we could be putting forward if our goal is to stop the virus getting into schools." Dimitris Christodides, a pediatrician and epidemiologist at the University of Washington School of Medicine, says, "There is a real chance a hybrid model could advance the spread of the virus." In the last two weeks, 97,000 children have been diagnosed with COVID-19. Remote learning, even though not perfect, is the safest. In conclusion, a realistic model that was produced with the help of the county board states that we are predicted to lose one teacher and/or one student to the virus, should we go the hybrid model. Our acceptable loss should be zero, not one. Thank you for your time, and please consider the safety of your staff and students first.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Leigh Zucker, and I teach at the high school in special education. I've worked in and out of collaborative and instructional classes for the last 10 years, and I've been part of the ABLE program for the last four years. I want to first thank you for all the board does for our district. When we're in need of things in our classrooms or supports, you have our backs and you help however we can, so we do appreciate that. That said, I thought a lot about what school will look like and what will be best for my students and my family. We've opted to stay at home, my family, and away from people in order to stop the spread since March. We have also opted that my own school-aged children will stay home and do online learning. But it puts me in a tough spot, because I have students who can't generalize skills. And home is home, so online school does make that difficult. But I would like to point out, by the end of May, we were getting students more engaged and more interested in online lessons because we were figuring things out. I think part of the problem in the spring was a lack of having a regular schedule and the urgency in stopping in-person so quickly. Like Chris Webster said, transitions are hard. I also know, because of COVID-19, it will change our programming. And even if we're in school in the fall, full-time, five days a week, it won't look like school. Our students won't have access to our community trips. They won't be able to practice their jobs and skills, and they can't practice cooking as of the first semester. Our life skills program will be restricted to theoretical skills instead of hands-on learning, which is how these students learn. I can't sit in front of my students and walk them through problem-solving step by step. When they're having trouble processing and they're on the verge of a meltdown, I can't give them my hand to squeeze, and I can't give them a weighted blanket. Our sensory rooms will be nearly empty. Classrooms that we've put hundreds of dollars of our own money into and hours upon hours of work won't be able to be used for these classes, even on an A/B hybrid day, because there are too many kids to fit in that class. As Jake Brenn said at a previous meeting, and I've worked with him at the middle school and I cannot speak highly enough of, he stated that the things that we put in place to keep students and staff safe are the same things that are removing our ability to be effective as staff members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Annette Kekka, and I'm a business education teacher at the high school. This is my 11th year with the district, and I would like to yield my time to Sarah Turner.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Turner. I have been here at the high school as a social studies teacher for 15 years, and I too have been before you a number of times. But tonight is my first opportunity to come before you as not only a teacher, but as a parent of this district as well. So this is kind of a different thing for me. But I'm here tonight to express my growing concerns over the district's return to learning plan. And I come before you, as I said, as both a teacher and a parent within the district. The plan as it currently stands is not one that is viable, executable, or one that has been well-articulated up until this point, from the vantage point of both a teacher and a parent. To date, neither parents nor teachers know what their class schedules will look like. Neither parents nor teachers are remotely familiar with what the day-to-day expectations and routines will look like. Neither parents nor teachers are confident that the safety measures put in place and presented will be effective or protective for students or staff. Professional development has not thus far been provided in any real sense, whether that's in regards to rewriting curriculum, how to best deliver instruction in a hybrid and/or remote environment, utilizing the available technology, and most importantly, how to keep our students and ourselves safe and healthy. The plans are, at best, vague, well-intentioned, and hopeful. But ultimately, the question is, are they realistic? Are they best-practiced? Are they sound? Are they data-driven? As parents, teachers, administrators, and stakeholders, these questions should drive every decision we make for our students and our children. Upon reflection, can we answer each of these questions affirmatively tonight? These plans were built by adults in a wholly unprecedented time, with little consideration to how students and parents will respond. We don't work in environments where it's conducive or even feasible to socially distance and still provide a quality education. As we plan to begin this school year in 13 short days, what is your confidence level that we are unequivocally taking the safest approach with the very best interest of our students, staff, and community at the forefront of our minds? Is anything less than 100% acceptable at this point? Despite our concerns and a list that was several pages long that was shared by SEA with you, we are all being asked to potentially expose ourselves to COVID-19, students and teachers alike. How many others are willing to do the same? Will you be helping in the enforcement of mask-wearing on a daily basis? Will you be walking and patrolling the halls daily with our students? Sitting in our classes and helping teachers clean during passing periods? Will you stop by to man the hall for me as I pause after class to answer a student's question? Will you be eating lunch in or working in communal spaces where the virus may live live for up to three hours? Will you come in and sub for us when we are forced out of our rooms to quarantine either ourselves or our children after an exposure at school? Can you drive the bus for the bus driver that suddenly finds themselves sick after being exposed to COVID-19 by a student? Will you be willing to come in and work with students one-on-one, as our aides do, while they are awaiting a negative COVID-19 test result so that they can return to work? When our nurses have been exposed, which they invariably will be, who will take up the slack for the necessary functions in which they serve? If you truly believe that our plans are clear, safe, and in the best interest of all, then you will be with us on our first day, our busiest days, and the days when our buildings are at the greatest risk of COVID-19. We want to be in school. We also recognize that remote learning is far less than ideal. We miss our kids. We miss our colleagues. For many of us, this is the first time we've seen each other in months. I walked into my classroom and the calendar still says March. It felt like a death. We miss doing what we have been highly educated to do and what we are passionate about. We want all the things you want as well, but we are also the ones who would be charged with providing them at no small risk to ourselves and our families. Nonetheless, many have forgotten that we are parents. Many of us face our own health risks, or those at home who do. We are scared, we are anxious, and we are more than a little apprehensive. We have shown that we can go up against and overcome all the woes in our education system, and we do that on a daily basis within this district. But tonight, I have to make the plea that we draw the line at COVID-19. Of the seven of you, five of you have had children who were students in my classes, and it was a privilege to have each and every one of them. Two of you also have family members that I have the privilege of calling my colleagues here in the district, and one of you I've had the opportunity to work alongside throughout my career at Sycamore High School. I think that these experiences that I've had with you and your children, most of you would say, if nothing else, I'm at least honest and that I will always speak up for those things that I believe to be right, and tonight is no exception. We have maintained that safety is our first priority, but as this plan has been laid out and explained and appears to be coming together, I cannot honestly say that I don't fear for the safety of my son, myself, my students, my colleagues, or my community. Just as I have watched over your students in my classroom, your spouses that I work with, and you personally, I beg you to watch out over me and those I care about as well, as you move forward making these decisions for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Scott Horlock. I teach science here at the high school, and I yield my time to Pam Olson.
Good evening. I'm Anne Martenson. I also teach science here at the high school, and I yield my time to Pam Olson.
Good evening, Board of Education and District and Building Administration. My name is Pam Olson. I have lived in unincorporated Sycamore for the past 27 years. I am speaking this evening as the proud parent of three Sycamore alumni and the grandparent of two current Spartans. I am also a 20-year professional educator in SYC 427, Chair of the Science Department at Sycamore High School, an active member of the Sycamore Education Association, and a participant in the Hybrid Return to Learning Planning Committee for SHS. I begin this evening by acknowledging the countless hours of well-intentioned and heartfelt work expended by the SYC 427 administrators, teachers, staff, and you, our Board of Education. Truly, leaders of every facet of our learning community are trying their best to make our schools as safe as possible for our beloved students and staff as they return to learning this fall. Let's be clear, the safety of the young people in our charge, our school community, and the broader Sycamore community is our first and highest priority, which is why I felt compelled to speak tonight. In my informed opinion, the hybrid learning plan is a fantasy world created from magical thinking anchored by faith and hope. I would argue the plan is more akin to the motion picture Jurassic Park. Substitute COVID-19 for the dinosaurs, school buildings and classrooms for the park and animal enclosures, and SYC 427 staff for the park employees. Just like in the film, children may be traumatized and employees may suffer the most horrific fates, all because the safety measures employed could not contain a force of nature. It is simply not enough to say we'll do everything humanly possible to keep people safe. COVID-19 is not human, and it has already demonstrated it has our number. My colleagues have presented a number of important questions and concerns tonight. In truth, there are still many more questions that need to be addressed and much additional light that needs to be shed on the hybrid learning plan. Based on the questions the board has asked of district and building administrators the last two weeks, it is painfully obvious to the teachers' union that the board and the parents of our learners have not been and are not aware of the many unresolved safety and learning issues with the plan. Point of fact, at last week's meeting, not one question was asked of the middle school principal regarding how the plan would work at that school. Like my colleagues, I too have questions for the board tonight, but first I must address the data. Data that should be driving our decisions. At present, DeKalb County has a 5% positivity rate for COVID-19. I would like to tell you, that is 20% higher than the state average of 4.1. As of yesterday, August 10th, there have been 964 lab-confirmed COVID-19 cases in the county since March 21st. Please note that the first COVID-positive case occurred after schools were closed. 107 of these confirmed cases, 11.1% of all cases, have occurred in individuals younger than 20 years old. Tragically, 30 DeKalb County residents have thus far lost their lives to the virus. Four of those souls were aged 40 to 60. There are more than 4,000 members of the SYC 427 community. At the current 5% positivity rate, county statistics suggest 200 members of our school community may acquire COVID-19. Edward Elmhurst Health, a regional healthcare provider, stated on its website that 85% of coronavirus patients will experience no to moderate symptoms. Therefore, it is possible that 30 of the 200 members previously identified may suffer serious to severe COVID-19 symptoms. It is not unreasonable to assume some of these 30 individuals may require hospitalization. A recent UC Berkeley and Kaiser Permanente study published in the peer-reviewed journal JAMA found the average hospital stay for COVID-19 survivors was 9.3 days. Theta is still being collected on the long-term effects the virus has on the human body across the age spectrum. Based on the age-specific data in our county, statistics allow that one member of the SYC 427 family aged 40 to 60 may die as a result of COVID-19 infection. In my position as grievance chair for the Sycamore Education Association, I had the opportunity to meet with district administration last Wednesday. When offered the data I just presented to you, I was informed that they knew the data, that the data kept them up at night, and that they were willing to risk illness, and hence death, to seat our communities- hence death, to seat our community's children behind desks and tables beginning August 24th. I was instructed to have faith and to keep hope. Using our children and SYC staff as test subjects, the social experiment we are about to engage in is a dangerous risk-reward trade-off. The Hybrid Learning Plan assumes the rewards are greater than the risks. After all, county statistics suggest only 30 members of our community may experience serious to severe COVID-19 symptoms, and it is very possible no one in our SYC 427 family may die of COVID-19. But which one of you will take responsibility if and when the experiment fails and the fallout is greater in the broader Sycamore community? Eight days ago, I was diagnosed with melanoma, the most dangerous of the three major forms of skin cancer. Four days ago, I underwent surgery to remove the melanoma. Thankfully, this invasive cancer was found in its early stage. Assuming the margins in my tissue are clear, at present, I have a 95% chance of being cancer-free. I do not share this news with you to evoke empathy; rather, I share it as a point of illustration. Melanoma is a rare cancer, accounting for only 1% of all skin cancers. In a population of 328 million people, approximately 192,000 new cases of melanoma occur each year in the United States. And yet, as rare as melanoma is, I acquired it. I'm one of the 192,000 new cases in a population of 328 million. The risk-reward trade-off did not work to my benefit. As much as I had hoped I would never acquire melanoma, I still got it. Rare events happen, and I am testament to rare events happening to people in Sycamore. The SYC 427 staff has been repeatedly told that we are the district's most valuable asset. We have been asked in recent weeks to be courageous and to do what's right for the community. The true courage may be revealed in standing up for the health and safety of those who are in our charge. And in so doing, we directly stand up for the broader Sycamore community, a community we love and have devoted our professional lives to. History will judge us for our decisions. While dying from COVID-19 may be a rare event in a given population, is the risk of even one life worth seating children behind desks and tables for 10 or 15 hours per week? Board members, a couple of you have a spouse or a child who teaches in this district. Others have children who attend one of our district's schools. Are the lives of your loved ones, your spouse, your child, worth the risk? If the answer to these questions is yes, then pay me the courtesy of looking me in the eyes when you tell me my life is an acceptable price, and by all means, continue on with your Hybrid Return to Learning Plans. If the answer is no, then you must immediately shift course and begin working on a fully remote return to learning. Quite literally, the lives of our learning community may depend upon the plan you choose. I thank you for your time and your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kylie Ryder, and I'm a senior at Sycamore High School. I have been a student in the Sycamore School District since 2007, when I started kindergarten at North School. I'm here tonight because, to my knowledge, I feel that there is a voice that has been absent from the conversations regarding the Return to Learn Plan. It is the one that is the most impacted on, and that is the voice of the student, the student to whom you bear the greatest responsibility. I know that there is a current hybrid model being planned for, that there is a push by some for a fully remote plan for all, and a pull from others for all in-person learning. You have to make a decision that will never be popular with everyone. You will be thanked by some and yelled at by others. While I know I cannot speak for all Sycamore students regarding what is right and best for them, I've spent my entire educational life in Sycamore schools, and I have younger siblings at the Middle School and North Grove, so I feel my voice is important in helping make this decision. The school district's mission is to empower all learners to succeed in their world. Well, our world experienced a dramatic change almost in an instant. The current Return to Learning Plan allows for students to learners to succeed in their own world, but more importantly, it allows students and parents an opportunity to choose between remote or hybrid in-person, whichever works best for them and their current situation. If there is one lesson I have learned from so many of the exceptional teachers here in the district, it is that we can only learn from trying. Sometimes we succeed and sometimes we fail, but we should never stop trying. The hybrid model helps us to learn what is going to work and what needs to be adjusted in order to safely return to full in-person everyday learning, hopefully at some point this year or even in the next. For those that are not ready to return to class, there is a fully remote option. I know that other communities have recently reversed their initial decision and moved to fully remote learning, taking away the choice from their students and community. Tonight, I ask you to continue to allow the students and/or community that choice. The recommendations from the CDC, IDPH, and the ISBE have all stated that if the proper safety protocols, such as masks and social distancing, are followed and enforced, that in-person learning provides a minimal risk, especially in our community, which has done such a great job of keeping our infection rates low. Specifically, the students of Sycamore High School have been able to gather together for the past several weeks to practice sports and take part in other activities. The students have shown to be able to follow these safety guidelines in order to be able to participate in those activities, and I believe the students would show you that applies equally to their desire to be able to pursue their education in person as safely as possible. I have seen our community come together to be Sycamore Strong many times. All I am asking now is for our students to have the opportunity to show how they can work together with the staff and demonstrate one more time how Sycamore Strong we can be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Joe McCormick, 21-year teacher here at Sycamore High School. I believe everyone here is committed to the same end, that being the safest and best implementation of the education of our children. I want to be in school. I want to be able to tell my cheesy jokes to my students and watch them roll their eyes. I want to watch them laugh, and I want to watch them learn. This is hard to do behind a mask or through a screen. We have utilized science, its facts, its deductions, and its guidelines to dictate our behaviors, wearing a face mask, washing hands, social distancing, and I commend Mark and his staff as they have altered our environment to meet these scientific guidelines. Perhaps we should also lean on science more for our decision in our Return to Learn Plan. The scientific principle of Aitken's razor suggests that if all things being equal are safest and best way to implement education, then the simplest explanation is the best. We have spent countless hours on a hybrid plan, one with a mountain range of questions and concerns, from safety and protocols to the workday and contractual issues to budget and overloads. This plan to date has a myriad of concerns with little clarity. We also have a remote plan, also with lots of questions and concerns, but also with some practice and a simpler form. We are not in the business of daycare, but in the profession of education. If one plan has a simpler explanation to our goal, then by scientific principle, it should be the preferred plan. As facts evolve and change and more time is dedicated to answer and simplify the hybrid plan, we can move towards that direction. But with days left before teachers are charged with providing a safe and meaningful education, let us use science to direct us, as we use science to direct our behaviors in wearing masks. Let Aitken point the direction and give our wants the time it needs to be implemented. Fear should not drive this decision, nor bravery. Science should. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Vern Alexander. I am a grandparent and a parent of former Sycamore student. I appreciate the weekly board meetings that we've been having, but I would appreciate if we could have the participation at the very end upon hearing some of the presentations. With that being said, some of the comments I'm gonna make tonight I would have made last week. Concern that I have in listening so far, if the data is what we've been given today is true from our Teachers' Union, I'm concerned about our teachers being prepared whether we use a hybrid method or a remote method as they're ready to go back in two weeks. That's a concern for me. Also, with the idea of hearing last week that elementary schools are not going to be able to provide Chromebooks to all children to take home and trying to have a consistent learning throughout the district is very much a concern for me. Also, are we going to have places and times for a help desk for Chromebooks and those that have technology problems? And also, the possibility of having some type of Zoom parent professional development as parents, grandparents, and others who might be having to help their children doing whatever lesson plan that we decide we're going to be using. Also, how do we plan on running mandated drills if by some chance the state says we still have to have those particular drills? Also, have we heard, I have not heard anything yet about the ventilation or the air quality in all our schools, which has to be a concern for everyone. Next, when is, who is going to be the district contact with the county health department, and how often will they be getting the updates, seeing that as a person in the community, we only get those updates once a week? Finally, due to the number of changes that happen outside of our control, please keep changes that we can control down to a minimum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jason Funderberg, Sycamore. I just wanted to address the Board real quickly, and I know my opinion probably won't be very welcomed, but I'm deemed to be an essential employee at my place of work, and I'm required to produce profitable results for that company, and in my humble opinion, I think the teacher is far more essential than I am. The CDC has laid out the opportunities for people to go back to school safely, kids to go back to school safely. All the data supports that. I feel it's our responsibility as a community to get our kids back in school. There's plenty of data that supports heightened suicides that's been taking place lately, child abuse, some of the different things that are taking place in that sector that we're probably not addressing. But 66% of your stakeholders reported back to you through a survey that said we should be back in school five days a week. I would like you to consider your stakeholders when you make your decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the Board this evening? Okay, then we'll move along to the next item on the agenda, which is communications, correspondence, and informational items, letters and newsletters. We had those. FOIA requests, noted that there was one that's been responded to, so. Committee reports.
No planning and zoning meeting, but I did spend a lower five and a half hours at the Resolutions Committee down in Bloomington last Friday. We had 14 resolutions that were presented, two ultimately were withdrawn. They are going to have a delegate assembly despite the fact that the conference has been canceled. It'll obviously be virtual. They're trying to figure out how to manage the voting. The most common discussion about that at the end of the meeting was potentially having a Zoom-type meeting and doing everything on a consent agenda, anything that gets pulled off, or that, because there were some resolutions that the language that was provided by the district that submitted was not accepted, but altered language from the committee was accepted. So if they take an appeal, anything that's pulled off the agenda would then be at a later in-person meeting down the road, or potentially the following year. But everything else could then move forward on a consent agenda. There were two or three based on language for pandemic issues and treating state regionally, allowing more local control in certain areas and not others. There was one, again, about weaponry, but it was not the one we have seen the last four or five years. It was actually moving forward with raising, pushing to raise the age at which a student or a child in a household can have access to a weapon, that they don't have to be locked up, that's currently age 14, and they're moving to push that to age 18 was the decision. It was not passed. It was do not adopt. There were only two people that supported that. They felt it was more a municipal issue than a school board issue. Other than that, the rest of them were pretty straightforward, and there were some reaffirmations, but it was an in-person meeting down in Bloomington with about three-quarters attending and about 25% virtually, and all but one from Wade down by Metropolis, and the rest were all Chicago metro area that did not attend. So, just an update. You'll see this come out in probably six or eight weeks with the summary of all the information from the meeting, so.
Thank you. Other committee reports? No, then we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody. We'll start as we have since before my time started here, start with our mission, empowering all learners to succeed in their world. Our vision, to provide an ideal learning experience where students and staff are engaged and want to come back the next day. And our core values, honesty, trustworthiness, integrity, equality, empathy, respect, citizenship, digital citizenship, responsibility, and collaboration. These are the five key questions that our professional learning communities work on. What do we want students to know and learn? What do students want to know and learn? How will we know if they have learned it? What will we do if they don't learn it? And what do we do if they already know it? And there's several things under the superintendent's report, but the first one is an update on athletics and activities, and for that, we're gonna have Mr. Kerik come to the podium, and it's actually his presentation, so he'll be speaking about activities and athletics tonight.
Okay. Thank you all for allowing me to present tonight. I'm gonna go through what we're looking to do this school year and what we have done already during this summer. Our goal this year is we want to provide full participation in every club, activity, and sport that we have offered in previous years. We want to run all our programs in an environment that follows our guidelines set by the IDPH and the ISBE. We want to be willing to move our athletics and activities to different times. We have to be willing to understand it's gonna look different than it has in the past. We want to ensure that we run our programs to their fullest extent so our students can have a positive experience. So on June 5th, the Illinois High School Association approved summer conditioning that allowed us to put kids in groups of 10, and the groups needed to be 30 feet apart. They could not do sports-specific drills, techniques, or equipment couldn't be used, but they were allowed to start conditioning. Athletes were to bring their own water. If they were inside, they must wear a mask. If they were outside, they would be able to take their mask off as long as they were socially distanced. And at the beginning of every session, we did a temperature check and a health monitor form, which I will show you later in the presentation. So we took some time to make sure that we were ready to go. So on June 14th, we began our summer conditioning, and we chose to only do conditioning outside. Those are the sports that all chose to participate in that first phase. All right, we're missing a slide here, so. On July 3rd, the IHSA approved the summer contact day period. That was gonna be July 6th through August 8th. Teams could start using sports-specific equipment, do specific drills and techniques. Groups were expanded to 50 that could intermingle, not during the same day, but they could be different groups different days. Again, if you had more than 50, groups needed to be 30 feet apart. Masks were worn in side by all athletes and coaches. If they were outside, coaches who could socially distance and athletes that could socially distance could take those off. Any team equipment that was used was cleaned before and after each session. During our summer contact- During our summer contact period, baseball, boys' basketball, girls' basketball, cheerleading, cross-country, dance, football, boys' soccer, girls' soccer, softball, tennis, and volleyball all chose to take advantage of that. Baseball had 18 sessions. They worked on fielding, hitting, pitching, game strategy. They had four junior, senior scrimmages, four freshman, sophomore scrimmages. And our coaches chose to wear their masks the entire time outside, even though that was not required. Boys' basketball had 12 sessions inside, shooting, dribbling, and team drills, offensive and defensive strategies. And again, coaches and players at all sessions wore their mask. Girls' basketball had nine sessions and did the same stuff as the boys, again, all masks by coaches and players. Cheer did 10 sessions. All practices, they chose to do all their practices outside. They worked on sideline cheers, individual tumbling and jumping techniques. Cross-country had 12 sessions. They worked on distance running and interval training. Football had 16 sessions. They worked on position drills and techniques, offensive and defensive strategies. When they went to team drills, the athletes wore masks. Coaches wore their masks the entire practice, even though they were not required, and they did operate in two separate groups each day. The boys' soccer team had 12 sessions, skill development, offensive and defensive strategies. And when they went to their small group work, our coaches had them wear their masks. Girls' soccer was the same. When they were in their team drills, they were also wearing masks. Softball did eight sessions, drills, fielding, hitting, and pitching, and their game strategy. Tennis had 12 sessions. They worked on serving, returns, and other shots. They also did singles and double strategies. Volleyball had 10 sessions, worked on serving, spikes, blocks, offensive and defensive strategies and rotations. Again, they were inside, so masks were worn by coaches and players during all practices. Our dance team had 16 sessions, worked on dance techniques, specific for their routines and combinations for competition. Again, when they had to go, they were outside most of the time. When they went inside, they did wear masks by coaches and the dancers. During this period, we were allowed to start using the weight room. We went above the IDPH guidelines. We went to groups of three. So we had one person lifting, two spotters on the side. That way, the aerosol did not go directly to the spotter or the lifter. After each session, or not session, but after each lift, the equipment was sanitized, and then the students went to the next station. The equipment was cleaned by the athletes. While they were inside, athletes wore masks, coaches wore masks at all times. So it brings us to July 29th, when the IHSA reorganized their athletic calendar. They moved some things around. The fall now has boys' and girls' cross-country, boys' and girls' golf, girls' tennis, and girls' swimming. Those are our current numbers as of 3 o'clock this afternoon. As you can tell, we're well over 100 kids participating. They will go through October 24th. Our winter sports is our usual winter sports, boys' and girls' basketball, boys' and girls' bowling, cheer, dance, gymnastics, boys' swimming, and wrestling. They're looking to go November 16th through February 13th at this time. Our spring sports, starting on February 15th through May 1st, I know it says winter, sorry for the typo, football, boys' soccer, and volleyball. Our summer sports would be May 3rd through June 26th, baseball, girls' soccer, softball, and boys' and girls' track. We also know that these dates are fluid and could change depending on where we are as a state. So who can we play? According to the governor's guidance, and there is all sports guidance, we're allowed to play anyone in our conference, so Canlin, LaSalle, Morris, Ottawa, Plano, Rochelle, and Sandwich, and anyone that's in our restored Illinois COVID region, which are in the counties of Boone, Carroll, DeKalb, Joe Davies, Lee, Ogil, Stevenson, Whiteside, and Winnebago. So that's a pretty large area. Yesterday, we were told we could play teams outside of our region if they were within 30 miles of us. At this time, we are choosing not to use that provision. We're gonna stick with the stricter guideline. The IHSA is allowing a fall contact period for sports that are not in session during the fall. They will follow the same rules as they did in the summer, from September 7th through October 31st. Each sport gets 20 days of instruction, and we know that that could overload kids. We're not gonna do that. We're gonna meet as head coaches and put a schedule together so that our kids aren't spread thin or that kids are forced to make choices. The IHSA has told us that each sport will have a culminating event, whether it's a regional or sectional or a state final, which will be determined on a sport-by-sport basis. At this time, they told us, do not expect a state final during this school year. If things change and they can allow that, then that's a bonus. They have set some scheduling limits, not only on where we can go, but how many times we can play, and that is, again, will be evaluated before each season. Spectators, we will go by the IDPH guidance and the standard that is for each event at that time. Obviously, if we go to another school, they're gonna dictate who can play and who, or who can come watch and who can't, as we will at our events. The, for our middle school, on June 24th, excuse me, July 24th, the IDPA, or the IESA, under counsel of the IDPH, canceled their fall sports. Unbeknownst to the IDPH and everybody else, the governor was going to come out with a different plan three days later. And then, so on July 31st, the IESA reinstated all their fall sports and adjusted their calendar. The sports that we participate in are boys' and girls' cross-country, which will start August 17th and go through October 16th, boys' and girls' bowling in March and April, and then boys' and girls' track in April and May. As for other IESA sport, or other, excuse me, our other middle school sports, we have been working with our conference to run conference schedules. Again, these are tentative dates. Again, we're gonna go by the guidance of where we are at that time. But at this time, these are the tentative dates for our other sports. As for our activities at the high school and middle school, each club and activity will be expected to meet a minimum of one time per month. Some will choose to meet more often than that, whether it's weekly, twice a month. Advisors and sponsors will choose if a meeting is in person or if it's a virtual meeting. If they do choose to meet in person, they're gonna follow the same procedures that our athletic teams have used for practice and contact sessions. Those procedures are, any participant has to be registered for the specific sport, club, or activity by using our 818 site. That way, all registrants have signed electronically our apparent consent for participation and assumption of risk and release form. This form is not new to us. This has been required forever, but it's more important than ever that we have that signed. There's also other things that club sponsors and coaches can put on that registration that they will sign at that time as well. For in-person meetings, practices, and contact sessions, all the students will do the following. Their coach, advisor, or sponsor will take their temperature with a touchless thermometer. They will go through the student monitoring form, which I'll show you next. I am currently keeping all those forms in my office. We're filing those daily. We have every form from June 14th till now. When they're indoors, masks will be worn for the duration of practices, meetings, and contact sessions. When outdoor, masks will be worn when social distancing is not able to take place. This is the form that we use, has their name, the time they arrive, the questions that they're gonna be asked. If any answer is yes, they are sent home. The temperature is 38 degrees Celsius or 100.4 Fahrenheit. Again, these sheets are all kept in my office when they're done. In closing, I want to say that our students need these connections, and our students need the physical activity, and our students need this mental stimulation. Our students need athletics and activities. Athletics and activities has always been important, but it's more important now more than it ever has been. This summer, we received zero complaints from our students about wearing masks indoors or outdoors. Their desire to participate in any way possible outweighed the inconvenience of wearing that mask. Their desire to protect themselves and their friends, their teammates, and community members, again, outweighed that inconvenience. Our students need our coaches and advisors and sponsors, and we have done a very good job so far, and we will continue to do our due diligence. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Chauncey. How many students would you say at this point in time were participating in these activities over the summer? It just is a wild guess, doesn't have to be.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna probably guess low and say 300.
300, thanks. And of those 300, how many coaches and other assistants and folks of that nature have been working with these kids?
All our coaches at all levels were working with our kids in those sports.
I mean, if you had to take a number, or guess at a number of people?
Between 50 and 60.
Okay. And would you say, and I know because of confidentiality, you can't really comment on specifics, but would you say as a whole, everyone's doing well with, with all the interaction? Everybody's feeling well, doing well? I mean, this is the first.
Yeah, we have, we've not had, we have not had anyone test positive. We've not had any cases. We've had students call and say, hey, I got a headache. They didn't come. Our students were very responsible during the summer. If they had a symptom, we followed the guidance, and when they were able to come back, they were welcomed back. And the key for us was to make sure that we did not cut corners and that we followed exactly what was given to us by the IDPH.
Okay, great, thank you. Because it's good to know for us, because this is the first time students and, say, adults or coaches have had a chance to interact since March. And so it's good to know that, that with proper protocol, that everyone can do what they need to do and be safe. So, thank you for that.
So I noticed on there that they're, they're wearing masks during indoor practices, like basketball or any of those.
Yep.
Would they also be required to do that during competition or not?
Right now, we don't know. We don't know if that competition, what that's gonna require. We do know, I can tell you what's happening right now for the current sports. So golf has been told that they're outside. They wear their mask. When they put the tee peg in the ground, they can take their mask off. When they walk to their ball, they put their mask on. When they get to their ball, they can take their mask off. When they get to the green, they wear it to the green. When it's their turn, they can take their mask off. Cross-country, during warm-up, or warm-up, running, and cooldown, masks can come off. Other than that, their mask is on. Tennis, while they're playing, their mask can be off. The changeover is, we've been told if, to make sure both teams are on the separate sides of the court, that way during the changeover, there isn't an issue. So I'm sure that we will have got more guidance coming forward as we get closer to November.
Thank you.
Are we gonna have enough space for some of these clubs and co-curricular activities to, to meet? And some of these groups are pretty big.
Yeah, so that, that answer is yes, but we're also gonna have to, it's gonna look different. So if they have more than 50, we're gonna have to find, they're gonna have to go in two groups. And we have places in this school where we can have groups of 50. They're gonna have to work as part of the schedule for us to make sure that they can get in a space. But they also have the choice to go virtual if they'd like to.
How about something like Orcasus, where we've normally got 200 kids involved? Are they, they normally start, I think, around October with, with meeting and things like that. I assume they're gonna have to stay in those smaller groups as well and.
Yeah, and Kristen Hill and I talked about Orcasus this morning, and one of the things that we talked about was those companies that she puts them in have to be the groups that they are in. And she might have to go on multiple nights. So, like we said, our intent is to figure out ways to make sure everybody can participate.
Right. Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Chauncey. We've spent a lot of time going over the return to learning update or return to learning plan. I'm gonna hit some highlights tonight. The other meetings have really focused in, in more detail, especially last week's meeting, but I do wanna hit some highlights. So, got a couple, couple of things that I'd like to talk about. First of all, an update. In terms of remote learners, as of this afternoon, we had a little over 1,100 students who had opted for remote learning. That's about 29% of our student body, a little bit higher than I, I thought we'd be, but still in the neighborhood of where other districts are at, who are moving forward with the hybrid plan. That leaves, based on an enrollment of about 3,800 students, that leaves 2,687 students left who are gonna participate in the hybrid model. We anticipate that that's gonna change still a little bit, but we have closed that, the link that parents can use to opt out of hybrid into remote. So those have to be phone calls and be considered on a case-by-case basis. That leaves approximately 1,344 students in classrooms on a daily basis. That's half of that 2,687 number. So imagine that kinda split out over the district and all of our grade levels, and that gives you an idea of what a hybrid day would look like in terms of enrollment. Schedule's still being finalized. We had an admin team meeting this afternoon and talked about that at the elementary, the middle school, and the high school level. That's all moving along. This remote, the, the number of remote learners was a key piece of information so that schools can move forward with scheduling and developing sections. It's a little bit easier. I wouldn't say that it's easy, but I would say it's easier at the elementary level, just because of the nature and the structure of an elementary school. Middle school gets a little bit more complex. It is most complex at the high school level. So that's probably the area where there's gonna be the biggest challenge, but that team has been working on it for a while already. And now that they have this information about remote learners, they can continue moving forward with that. So we're working on scheduling, finalizing the schedule so that we can get that, that information out. Technology update. This was a, one of the issues last week that, that we touched on. Roxanne Horton did a great job. So the plan right now was to provide a Chromebook for every student in grade 6 through 12. So that covers middle school and high school. We'll provide a Chromebook for every remote learner in grades K through 5. So if students have opted for remote, they'll have a Chromebook that they can use at home. Then we'll also have a Chromebook in each class for each of the hybrid learners. So that, those Chromebooks will stay in classrooms. They'll have to be cleaned every day, but they'll be available for students to use every day in the, in the hybrid classrooms. We got a good piece of news this afternoon. We started talking about how we've used other technology in the past. We started talking about how we've used other technology in the past, and iPads came up. And Roxanne looked into the number of iPads that are still available. We actually have a larger number of iPads than this, but some of them are older and don't update any longer. So, this number is the number of iPads that still do update. So, as new apps come out, they, they are more likely to be able to use them. They are a couple of years old. So, at some, at some point, they'll, they will not be able to update anymore, but they can right now. So, and this time, where technology is critical, we'll be able to repurpose these iPads, at least temporarily, until the Chromebooks come back in. That may be for hybrid learners that are not in school on those days. But we are also looking to survey parents and ask which of them has a device for students to use at home. So, the thinking is between the devices that families have at home for their students and the 300 additional iPads that, that we discussed today, that will be able to cover all of our students K through 5. So, just an update on technology. Health and safety has been an area of focus for a while. And every week, we have meetings and, and contact with the DeKalb County Health Department. Cory Mauch, I hope I said that right, who is our department head for the nurses, has done an absolutely fantastic job staying in touch with the DCHD. Regular contact with them. Cindy Graves is one of our main contacts there. So, one of the things that we've been waiting for is some additional information from IDPH on flow charts. So, if, if students or staff start to show symptoms, what protocols will we use? What kind of FAQ sheets will they put out? What sort of symptoms to look for? As of this afternoon, that information was not available. But we did get an email late in the day that IDPH has, has produced those documents, sent them to the governor's office for review. And they're hoping to be able to release those tomorrow so they can release those to schools. We can take those in and make them available. In the meantime, one of the great things that Cory has done is, is just do an absolute ton of research. And this morning when we met, she showed us documents from Indiana Department of Health. FAQ sheets, screening flow charts, symptoms of COVID, and, and protocols on return to school. So, if you've been symptomatic, you've tested positive, or you've been quarantined and, and shown symptoms, but, but not even tested positive, student or staff member, what's the protocol to return to, to school? And we reviewed all those documents with Cory today. She, she really liked those documents. Actually, we, we asked David Olson to, to start taking those documents and tweak them to fit our needs. But Cory poured over them and really feels comfortable that it touches on everything that we need to implement. And it aligns with all of the existing CDC, IDPH, and DeKalb County Health, Health Department guidelines. So, one of the points that I think is really important is that we get this information out. And hopefully here in the next couple of days, we'll finally have that information to put out. So, really good news in terms of, of health and safety. That's kind of an overview of what we've discussed here over the last week or so. But, but Nick Reineck has done a lot of work with the Health Department and worked very closely with Cory. Is there anything that I, I missed?
No, I would just reiterate how amazing of a, a job she's done. So, if you see her, say something to her. But she's working countless hours and doing a fantastic job early into this position. So, she's hitting the ground running.
One of the other things, one of the other things that Cory is going to be doing is, is working with Mark Ekstrom, going through facilities, making sure that they're ready to go in terms of being able to provide healthcare. Not just for students who might show COVID symptoms or staff members, but just the run-of-the-mill illnesses that, that we are still going to experience. So, preparing for that, but then also preparing isolation areas. So, students or staff members who do show those symptoms, we can isolate them and provide some treatment, and then provide some guidance for them in terms of contacting their physician and getting tested if needed. So, that work is, is ongoing, and I think they've got some meetings set up for this week. Transportation update. And I'm going to turn that over. We talked a little bit about this this afternoon, but, but Nicole is, is the expert on transportation. So, I'm going to turn that over to her.
Sure. So, I've been in contact with Kathy Sheehan, who is our Director of Transportation. And as of this afternoon, we have about 750 students signed up for transportation. We typically see about 1,700 students that we transport, so that's way less than half there. So, with the combination of our staggered start times and are able to consolidate some routes, we're looking at having right around 20 students or less on each of our buses. So, that significantly is less than what ISB allows us to have on the buses. So, we feel like these staggered start times are really going to work in our favor. And it might be something that we need to continue to look into moving forward when we're in a normal school year.
Any questions for Nicole?
With, with those numbers coming in from transportation, do you think that that changes our ability to provide transportation to, say, the YMCA or the Park District for any sort of after-school care opportunities that might arise from those relationships?
Yep, absolutely. So, I've been in contact with Courtney Walls, our, our Oscar Director. And we will be reaching out to those two entities if we are able to provide transportation out there. But I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be able to, unless we have an influx of kids that decide to ride the bus. But I think as of right now, we'll be able to work with those two entities.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Nicole? Any other questions in general in terms of the, the return to learning update? Like I said, just hit some highlights. We've had a lot, a lot more detail over the last couple of weeks. And we'll have at the special meeting next week, some additional detail. But any questions that I, that I can answer right now?
Comments? So, in listening to what we've heard tonight, the thing that jumped out at me the most, quite frankly, was the information on how ready people feel to go back to school as far as just preparation and timeframe. And that actually, according to what I wrote down here, is true whether it's a hybrid or online. So, I'm going to go back to what I said three meetings ago and, and say that irregardless of which path we take here, I don't think there's enough time for the teachers to be fully prepared for it. So, I'm still an advocate for starting the schedule after Labor Day and spending that time continuing to refine protocols if we're in hybrid model or providing additional training, not only for teachers, but even potentially for some parents for online learning if that's where we end up. So, I just wanted to put that out there.
And, and in response, I'd like to say that that's something that we have talked about, is the possibility of pushing the start ba, start date back a little bit. We actually, in that conver, in those conversations, talked about a couple of different options. And one of the options that I would feel comfortable with is pushing back the start date for staff or August 31st. And then students for the Tuesday after Labor Day. That if we, if we were to do that, and, and there's action on the, on the agenda here a little bit in calendar. And if that's what we'd like to do, which I, I think might be a good idea, we can table that. But if we do that and the teachers start on August 31st, that's a five-day week. So, we, we can basically move the, the week next week down two weeks, pushes that, that week back two weeks. If students return the Tuesday after Labor Day, that's a four-day week. Would present some complications for our planning for that, that first week of school with staff. But a four-day week would actually work pretty well for students. So, I don't think that's a bad idea. I do recall talking about that a couple of weeks ago. All things considered, I think we're making a lot of progress, but a little bit of, of extra time might not be a bad idea. So, I would be very open to the idea of, of pushing things back two weeks from where we're at right now.
I think that gives them time to prepare. It also gives us time to do some training, and it gives us time to engage with the teachers on anything else that they think would make it more comfortable or safer for all people to be there. And more time for that would be helpful. And quite frankly, it actually cuts two weeks out of not having all the Chromebooks here too, which would alleviate some, a portion thereof or a time, part of the timeframe. So, I think irregardless of which direction we go, that I would be in definite support of that.
It presents some other complications too. It's a little bit of extra time for, for parents to, you know, to get daycare and that sort of thing. But it gives us additional time to plan, might give transportation additional time to, to prepare for those routes to, to daycare after school. All things considered, I, I actually think that that's a, a pretty good idea. And if the rest of the board is, is okay with that and can just provide me with some direction, what I would ask is then to have the opportunity to talk to the Calendar Committee, run that by them, and, and see what an altered calendar would look like. And then try to have something ready for the board to look at next Tuesday instead of take action on tonight.
I guess my question would be, how are we farther ahead if we do that? I mean, it just seems like we're pushing, pushing back. Unless we, we find a, a really useful time when, when the teachers can come in and meet for those two weeks maybe that we're postponing, so that they have time to kind of familiarize themselves with the system and, and, and do the appropriate planning then, that, that would be different. But if we're just going to push the start back two weeks and not have, use those two weeks for that kind of training and implementation, I don't think we'd be any farther ahead.
I, I think that's a really good point also. And, and one of the things that, that we've heard consistently, you guys have heard this as well, is it's just additional time to do that sort of planning.
Right.
So, we'll still provide all the planning on that, that first week if we were to move it back to August 31st. But now the schools are open. And for, you know, for all of the summer until last Monday, the schools were closed. So, teachers couldn't get in, they couldn't get classrooms ready, they couldn't work together in the school if they, if they chose to do that with masks on and socially distanced. They can do that now. So, they, they don't have to rearrange time outside of school and, and try to fit that into their, their schedules there. They can be in the buildings, in their classrooms, getting them ready. Mark Ekstrom and his team have done a great job with facilities. But what they've done is just come some kind of general preparation. This would actually give teachers more time to get into their classrooms and, and do that sort of work. It, it buys us some time in terms of planning and preparation at the district level, but it does provide some of that time for teachers to get into the school and, and do that. So, the, one of the other things that we've heard is that teachers kind of prefer not structured professional development necessarily. Some of that i, is, is requested. But a lot of the requests have been just time to work together in groups, whether it's grade-level groups or content areas. So, they would have the freedom to come in and do that if, if they chose to do that. So, I do see it as, as providing that time for teachers and, and giving them that additional time to plan. But we still also have almost a full week of professional development that they're going to get, starting on August 31st under that altered calendar. So, I think it's, I think it can be time well spent.
So, the idea is that by giving the teachers two more weeks, the 69% that feel unsafe are going to be, feel safer because they have two extra weeks. And from what we heard, it's, I think 69% of people being very afraid to come back is very significant. I, I don't know how we can just ignore what went on here this evening. And I don't understand how we are not erring on the side of caution when we're talking about people coming back into the buildings. I look at the schools that are listed that are going complete remote, and I'm, we're not talking about, you know, we're talking about Stevenson, that Tim Carlson thinks is the academic prowess of the year. Naperville, Elgin, Plainfield. What are these people seeing that we can't seem to see? Science, science, science. Health, safety. I, I, I am astounded that we're still going around and thinking two more weeks is going to make any difference, that these people are going to be less afraid to come into school. I, I, I'm completely not understanding what's going on.
I, I do have a question for Dr. Wilder, and, and part of this, I think, is just my own naive understanding maybe of how the, the teachers' calendars align with administrative calendars and how summertime is spent. I noticed that most of the questions that were asked to the union didn't necessarily say, do you feel safe? But it was how well do you understand what your day will look like? How well do you understand the safety protocols? And so I guess my question is if their, if their first official day, as we talked about the other week, was going, hasn't even started yet, is part of that lack of understanding that they haven't been on-site to receive those communications? Or are communication, are they in constant communication throughout the summer? Is that a statistic that would likely improve once they are on-site and able to have those in-person discussions and understand the work that the administration team has been doing all summer on these safety protocols?
Yeah, I think that gets to the heart of the question I was trying, I was trying to ask.
I, I think that's a, a really good question. I think that's a really good point. And I think one of the examples of, that I would throw out is that the amount of information that we've received over the last couple of weeks at board meetings is, is just an example of how difficult it is to communicate that in a couple of emails or a couple of even Zoom or, or Google chats. It's complex information. And, and we can all attest to it. And anybody that's been involved with the planning thus far knows that, you know, you answer one question and, and there's three more that pop up. And you answer that, you know, those three, and then there's, there're more, there's more that pop up. We still have that happening today. It was very difficult to communicate all of that to staff when they're not in the building. We can communicate some of that, and some of those questions, like information from IDPH, we, we still don't have yet. But that's another thing that could be provided, once staff are able to come into the building. It wouldn't necessarily be formal meetings with, you know, the whole staff together. But as staff come in, it gives us an opportunity to have those kind of conversations, share more of that information, and share the detail that, that is very difficult to share in an email or in other correspondence or communication. So, I, I do understand that there's a, a, a lack of understanding. But I think part of that is just because we've been out for the summer. And again, I, I think as we've been able to demonstrate the last couple of weeks, these are complicated issues, and, and it's more than just a couple of answers. So, I, I think it would allow us to do a, a lot more of that. And I would hope that after an additional period of time, let's say that's two weeks, that if the staff were surveyed again, that, that percentage would go down because they, they've started and gotten, they started to have some of those questions answered, they've got more information, were able, able to share more. And I would hope that, that we're in a better spot.
So, is there a way then that that time, I guess I'm still having an issue understanding why.
Me too.
Delaying the calendar is going to increase the effectiveness of that time. Because if they still aren't starting until a week later, then that, that delay hasn't done anything to help their understanding. I mean, maybe it's given us some time for some additional planning. And if the administration thinks that that time is warranted, I, I certainly support it.
Okay.
But if it's not going to buy them any more prep time, let's say, on, on campus where these concerns can be addressed, then I, I don't know that that's an effective use of time.
Well, I apologize for any miscommunication. That's exactly what it would provide, is more time in the building to prep and plan and receive information from administration.
So, would we have then formal or informal workshops? Or how, how would we do that so that we know that, that's happening?
It would be more informal because they wouldn't be required necessarily to come in during that time. But as soon as we opened up the doors on August 3rd, if you drive by any of the schools, you can see the, the cars there in the parking lot. It would be more informal over those two weeks. And then the formal part would start on August 31st.
But what do you, I, I guess from our standpoint, would we provide opportunities to facilitate those informal gatherings, you know, in, in an atmosphere where if there are questions, we'll have somebody there who can answer them?
Sure, absolutely.
So, there's a, maybe a, a better comfort level? I suspect that with some more knowledge and with a better comfort level, some tensions might ease on some of these issues.
Sure. And there, there will be opportunities to do that for administration to, to meet with staff, and, and they can make times available. And again, teachers aren't required to come in during that time, but a great number of teachers have come in. So, administration can make those opportunities available, meeting in their buildings. Elementary, you know, schools might overlap a little bit because we've got five of those. But absolutely, those times would, would be available informally over those two weeks.
And, and I mean, I think it would be a great benefit for us as well to get their, to get their input so that we know. I mean, they're, they're going to have an insight that's different than ours, and, and they're going to know things that, or be able to suggest things that are going to be better and improve the plan too. So, I mean, I really think we need to welcome that kind of discourse that we, that we've always enjoyed so that, so that we can make things better.
I would absolutely agree. And, and one of the other things that allows us to do at, at more of a district level is, is to have some of those conversations about safety protocols and involve more of the staff in that. But I think your point is, is well made. Not only is it us sharing information with the staff, it's also getting feedback, getting questions from them. And we've learned all along the way that we may plan and, and work hard to develop our plan. But as we continue to talk to people, it's, there are other questions that come up that we just have not had a chance to think of. So, getting that feedback, I think, would be very valuable.
I agree. So, I would like, if we, if we decided to move that back, I want to see that those two weeks really be profitable time and, and do whatever we can to make sure that that opportunity is there for that to happen.
Any other? Any other thoughts from the board on that? Just looking for some direction, not necessarily an official vote.
Nowhere I'm at.
Yeah, there was a lot of talk tonight about science, the virus, use of the words, "it's a force of nature", test subjects, and I think the thing that I've been thinking the most about for the last month is when you look at any sort of statistical data, whether that's rate of infection, deaths per 100,000, whatever it is, and you just apply that broadly and say, "Well, this is how many teachers we can expect them to get it, or how many students we expect to get it", that that's kind of a flawed way of looking at it, only from the standpoint of, you're assuming that that number is different if school is closed. You're just applying a percentage to the whole population, saying, "This is what we expect", when the question we need to ask is, are they, are we safer opening the schools or safer closing them? And that's where I struggle to understand or to rationalize how closing schools makes it a safer place. And when I think about that, I think, who better in our community, in the city of Sycamore, to look after the well-being of our people, of our students, than the largest employer, the largest entity? The entity with a $53 million budget and 500 employees dedicated to the safety and well-being of our kids? And if that entity isn't qualified in a class size, based on your statistics of, I think this Illinois State Report card says our average class size is 24 students, so let's take 30% out of that, and then divide it into two groups, we're talking an average class size of eight and a half kids, which is about how many people we've got, you know, out in the public here. And if that's not a safe situation, and we shut the schools down, then where, where do we expect those kids to go where they're gonna be safer? Are we shunning that responsibility to send them to a small daycare provider, a single parent running something out of their house, or a smaller entity here in town? The baby has to pack 15 or 20 of these kids from different school districts, different cities together, and has to watch them throughout the day? Are we relegating those kids to older, higher-risk family members who don't have to work perhaps? And that's where I really struggle with the decision to say, "Let's throw up our hands and wait for better data and, you know, hope that we're making the right decision by shutting our schools down and forcing this burden on everybody else because we aren't willing to take it on"? And I think about it every hour of every day, and I just can't rationalize for myself. A lot of the people that we hear from have said, you know, "Zero risk is the acceptable value we're looking for." I also don't know how to rationalize that. There was never zero risk.
Never will be.
You look at death rates for anything, DeKalb County in 2018 lost 12 people from influenza, so if we're triple that for COVID, I mean, just tell me what the acceptable number is, and that's what nobody's been able to provide me. When the number gets to this, we feel safe again. We accept that level of risk, but not this level of risk. I struggle to come up with a better reason to shut down our system and potentially destroy the future of, you know, 3,500 students' lives while we wait and hope for a miracle solution to come down on high. So, that's where I stand.
Steve, I guess, thanks Eric. When I reflect on everything about this tough decision that we've had to make and everything, all the work that's gone into, I've always thought it's come down to, it would come down to a little bit of a compromise on the timing. So, if that's something that you're recommending, to push it back two weeks, if that's what Steve is suggesting is a good way to go, then, and if you feel like that would be a good use of time, you know, I'm comfortable with that. So long, again, though, that that time is used in a wise fashion. And I don't know, it's, it sounds like it's voluntary, and I'm not a contract law guru by any means, so I don't know if there's any way to make it more mandatory for people to show and attend these meetings, but anything that we can do to get the kids back in the classroom for social and emotional well-being, it's a better way. Because right now, I can tell you, I think of the single parent who is trying to balance all this. I think of my neighbors who have young kids, who are shunned by their daycare provider because they've opted for a hybrid method and they're not accepted because they're only gonna take remote learners. There's already a social and emotional toll going on with our parents, and I think, you know, we as board members have to weigh that as well, along with the teachers, of course, and hopefully that their concerns can get addressed here in the next two weeks. So, after all that, I guess I'm in favor of some compromise on that start date.
I mean, I think I could probably just echo those same sentiments. I'm fine with the recommendation of postponing as long as, as I said before, as long as we know that's gonna be profitable time.
Sure.
And that we're gonna be able to achieve that kind of dialogue and that training and information and free exchange of ideas. I think that would be great.
Well, if the rest of the board is okay with that, we've got a meeting actually tomorrow morning with SEA leadership, and we can start to talk about how we can use that time. I'll work with the Calendar Committee to come up with an amended calendar that the board can look at and take action on next Tuesday.
At the meeting next week, could we have an update on what's gonna happen during those two weeks?
Absolutely. I think that's a good idea.
I think, guess, just kind of going along with that, is this kind of, you know, we heard a lot of statistics in regards to one-to-five scale of comfortability, is, I would hope then, a lot of educators would be taking that time and taking advantage of that. So, is there any way to be able to circle back on that as that time ends to say, the percentage of people who actually are educators that are, are teachers that are taking advantage of that time, to be able to make sure that they're fully equipped and ready to go day one when our students are in the door? Is that data that we can get back?
Absolutely. We can, we can collect that. Numbers, you know, numbers of staff taking advantage of that, percentages of staff taking advantage of that, that is absolutely data we can collect and share.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
But yeah, I would agree. I have no issue with pushing that, pushing that day back, especially if that time's gonna be well-spent. But I think, and we've all kind of alluded to it, we gotta get the school year started at some point here.
I agree.
And there has to be, we kind of, we kind of have to know we're kind of, we're pushed back as far as we can go, I would say, at that point, and we gotta be ready. I do, I love the fact that, you know, we've taken a bite out of that technology missing, so that's definitely gonna, that's definitely gonna help, especially at the elementary level. So, that's, even that in itself is a help. I mean, you take, depending, you know, for the hybrid learners that are gonna be missing that technology on those days, they'll, hopefully, fingers crossed, maybe we get Chromebook sooner or something like that. So, I think that would be fantastic.
Okay. I think I've got the direction that I need. Any other questions about the return-to-learn update or plan? Couple of last topics under Superintendent's reports. One of the things that the district has done for a while is hold quarterly board retreats. Those are retreats that are held with administration, and I think it makes a lot of sense for that first board retreat to focus on the return-to-learning plan. I believe the date is in October, so it's a great opportunity for us to talk about how things have progressed. And then one of the things that Eric brought up a couple of meetings ago was timeline for working from wherever we're at at that point to a full return. So, at least having conversation about what those steps might look like and planning for the future. But if the board's okay with that, then I'd like to suggest that we make that a topic for that first board retreat, and we'll look to do that. We've got some spaces in the district that I think that we can meet. It's a group that's less than 50, we can, we're masked and socially distanced, so I think face-to-face would be not only feasible, but a good way to do that. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, definitely.
Yes.
Okay. Jim, I'll work with you on getting that all numbered out.
Okay.
Live streaming board meetings, I know that this is a topic that's come up in the past, even though I haven't been part of those conversations. This has been new for the board, but I think it's, you know, it's been well-received by a portion of the community. If the board wants to continue live-streaming meetings, and that's not a decision that I'm gonna ask for tonight, but some things I would like you to think about if you want to revisit that decision and maybe move in that direction. There are some challenges in order to make that happen, once this space is no longer available. We've got great equipment here, we've got great staff up there who run everything for us, but when we're not meeting here, it's, that equipment is not as available. So, just some things to think about, you know, what facility would work best? The meetings that I've been fortunate to attend have been at the middle school and in, I think, the language arts area. That's a large enough space to continue meeting in, but we would need some additional equipment, ideally equipment that can be set up and left there permanently, or at least, you know, mounts that can be installed, so that that equipment can be installed and set up pretty easily. But another thing to think about is if the board wants to move forward with that and look at purchasing equipment to do that, then it needs to be probably a regular meeting place where the board's gonna meet on a regular basis. So, again, not asking for any decisions tonight, but just some things to think about as we continue with these meetings, live-streaming, if that's something the board wants to do after we're out of this space. We would just need a little time to prepare for that if we want to continue doing that. So, I welcome any questions and any discussion if you'd like, but just wanted to share some things to think about if we want to continue live-streaming.
You know, Steve, given, I don't know what the numbers are looking like tonight on the people watching, but given our restraints of just having only 50 people per room, and the reports I've heard, it's certainly been more than 50 people watching. Until, until our hands are untied in that regard, and the number of people who can attend a meeting, I think we should just continue to, you know, have our meetings televised to the best that we can. So, I would definitely be comfortable purchasing some equipment, and who knows? Maybe our kids can eventually take over the helm up there. No offense, guys, I think you're doing a great job, but I think our Spartan TV crew do a great job, even the middle school folks, so. But I like that idea, and I think it's important to share the word because not everyone can get here and view our meetings, so. It's a good thing that we're doing.
Typically, in the past, our discussions have centered around cost and location. We've been loathe to spend money on ourselves, or, you know, a space, a dedicated space for us, or, you know, even equipment for us. So, I think a lot will turn on, you know, what the cost is going to be, and then what space we would have available. I think I would feel uncomfortable in the commons with anything permanent there, because it just, I mean, it's just too much of a high-traffic area, and I just don't, you know, I just don't see that stuff. Either it'll be in the way, or it'll get trampled, so. So, that might not be the right solution, but if we can find a good place and a good solution, and the price was right, I think we could do that, but we need to, all those things would have to fall into place, I think.
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea. I have no problem televising it. I think it's great that we've had so many people actually engaged, because as you know, unless we're honoring someone or they're invited, they typically don't have a lot of people at our board meetings. So, I think that would be great. I feel very uncomfortable sitting up here right now because it feels so pretentious for Sycamore to be this far away from people, and I understand why we're doing it, obviously. But in the future, when things hopefully are improved, I'd rather not be in this kind of pretentious situation. So, and I would, I would like to see it maybe even become incorporated into the Spartan TV piece because we do have such great facilities there. Why can't that be something that is coordinated as part of that class that's offered, to televise the board meetings? That would give them great experience, and again, it may not be the sixth-grade ELA, it may be somewhere else. And then the only other question I would have is, the one thing I do like, I think most board members like, is that we do visit each school every year.
Yes, right.
And that means it's a roadshow. I know Spartan TV has the portable trailer, but it's often been used for sporting events or other things, so maybe it's, we'll televise board meetings as often as possible, but I would not want to lose the opportunity to be at each of the schools and hear from each of the administrators and see what's happening in each of those buildings. So, either we'd need to be on the roadshow, or maybe though, we only televise one board meeting a month, and the one we're at the school isn't televised.
And I would echo your thoughts on that, Steve, and what everyone else has said, and maybe a, you know, reasonable compromise is that we don't necessarily have to livestream events when we're not in our, in the high school or the boardroom, whatever, but those meetings could still be recorded on rather simple equipment and uploaded the next day for people to go back and watch.
Yes.
So, maybe that's, maybe that's some middle ground that we could explore initially.
Yeah, I think it's worth exploring, I guess, is the bottom line.
Okay.
We'll work out the details.
That's what I needed. Let me work with David a little bit on what the options might look like, and we'll come back to the board with some, some things to look at and consider in the future.
So, for the district calendar, should we, should we remove that from the agenda and take that up at our next meeting?
I would recommend tabling that and then planning on, taking action on that next Tuesday, yes.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Okay, motion to place on the table. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll table that and put it on for next Tuesday?
Yep.
Budget update.
Thanks, Jim. So, this year will be my eighth year presenting the budget to you guys. So, I just want to take a walk down memory lane over the last seven years and all the hard work that we've done. So, three years of budget deficit reductions totaling $7 million in expenditure reductions. We've presented unfunded mandates pushed out by the state and mandated categorical payments that have been 120 days delayed or not received at all. We've had prorations to general state aid and a new funding formula now known as evidence-based funding. We've had different scenarios for a teacher retirement system pension cost shift onto school districts, and a potential property tax freeze. But none of those scenarios have prepared me for putting together a budget and the uncertainties that we've been a part of in the last five months. So, because of this fluid situation with information being pushed out daily, you can imagine the difficulty of piecing together a budget to present with the unknowns. So, for that reason, we've decided to push back the tentative budget to be presented next Tuesday. I would normally do it at this board meeting. That will still allow the 30-day window between the tentative budget and the final budget presentations, as well as allowing the most accurate numbers to be presented, knowing that there definitely will be a contingency for the unknown. So, I just wanted to give you guys an update to that tonight, so I will be back here next Tuesday presenting the tentative budget. Any questions on that timeline?
So, questions on, about the budget or on the budget, or any kind of budgetary questions really should wait till next week?
I know you'll have none.
Because I got a lot.
I'll be ready for you.
I hope so.
Nicole, will we get a sneak preview loaded up in Board Docs the night before or the day before, so we can kind of look at a few?
Or the week before?
We'll have the, the ISB form will be uploaded Friday with your packet.
Okay.
And then I can put a couple highlights together, hopefully get that pushed out on Monday.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anything else for the budget update? Open discussion, future agenda items, some of which we've already talked about? Anything else? Okay, if there's nothing else, then is there a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment, discipline, or dismissal of personnel in imminent litigation?
Samute, Jones.
Second.
Got a race.
Okay, Davey?
Yes.
And Jacobson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Tylo?
Yes.
Tylo?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we'll meet in executive session and then return with a final vote and hopefully